Great. See, it's now 5:30 on Thursday, January 12th. So we'll go ahead and open this meeting of the Deschutes County Planning Commission. Our first order of business here is going to be the election of Chair and Vice Chair for the coming year. So nominations are now in order for Chair. Would anyone like to make-
Chair?
Commissioner Crawford?
I nominate Commissioner Kiras for second term as Chairman.
Second.
Okay, so it has, there's been a nomination for me, Commissioner Kiras, made by Commissioner Crawford and seconded by Commissioner Cyrus. Are there any further nominations? And there are, I think we were going to at least have one Commissioner present on Zoom. Is there a Commissioner present? Okay, so we're, I think we're all looking at the opening screen. It says the meeting will begin shortly. So maybe we'll just take a minute and see if we can get a view of, there's Commissioner Alt, or Vice Chair Altman. Hi. So do you have any nominations for Chair? Okay. All right. So if there really aren't any other nominations, then that means that I am now Chair. Thank you, everybody.
I-
No?
Do we need, well, no, I guess I say, do we actually need to complete the process?
We have to have-
I would, I would move to, I would move to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot.
Okay. Okay, so it's been moved to close nominations and cast a ballot, and it's been properly seconded. So we'll go ahead and cast our votes. Commissioner Cyrus, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Hofcamp?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford, Vice Chair Altman?
Aye.
Okay, and I will abstain, just because it's weird to vote for yourself. Okay, great. So let's move on to the nominations of Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to make a nomination.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Hofcamp.
Okay. Or is there a second to this nomination?
I would second.
Okay, Commissioner Williams has seconded the nomination. Are there further nominations for Vice Chair? No further nominations. Okay. So in that case, I think we will go ahead and, I'll entertain a motion, if anyone would like to make one.
I've moved to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot.
Okay, is there a second to?
Second.
Okay, so now it's been moved to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot. So does that mean we all go down and vote, or is it part of?
You just, well, if it passes, that's how it's recorded.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner Cyrus, how do you vote?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Hofcamp?
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Crawford? I will vote yes as well, and Vice Chair Altman?
Yes.
Okay, so that is a unanimous ballot as well. So now you're the Vice Chair. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, so that being completed, we can move on to our next item, which is approval of minutes from September 29th, October 13th, October 27th, November 10th, December 8th, 2022. So are there any comments on the minutes?
I have one comment that Commissioner Cyrus was not present via Zoom on December 8th.
Okay. And would anyone like to make a motion regarding the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes of September 29, October 13, October 27, November 10, and December 8 as amended by Commissioner Williams.
My second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the aforementioned minutes. Commissioner Cyrus, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Hofcamp?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford? Vice, former Vice Chair Altman?
Aye.
It'll take me a minute. And I'll also vote yes. So another unanimous ballot. All right, so now we move to public comment, a note about public comment for this evening. At this time, we'll be taking public comments about items not on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public present on Zoom? Okay, so we have one member of the public present in person. So in terms of our meeting agenda today, we will be having a public hearing on amateur ham radio facility amendments. That will, of course, be open to public comment because it's a public hearing. The housekeeping amendments work session, that's a work session, so the, we will be having a public hearing regarding that. Remind me the date? January 26th, so that's the best time to offer a comment from the public, so it can be included in the public record. And then, of course, we'll be having Planning Commission Geographic Representation debrief. If there are members, member of the public desiring to make a comment about that this evening, that would also be fine. We won't be accepting further comments during Item 6. Okay, so are there any comments about items not on the agenda?
Thanks, Commissioners, and good evening, and congratulations to Commissioner Kiras and Commissioner Hofcamp. It's very odd when I'm here by myself, but I just wanted to say that my name's Jack Farley. I reside at 19345 Dusty Loop in Tamalo. I was able to go to the last two Board of County Commissioner meetings on the 21st of December and yesterday, the 11th of January. And I'm sure you're all aware that the Commissioners did decide to go with the proposal to revert a second-at-large seat back to a Tamalo seat, and that'll happen at the end of this term for the next term, starting in July. I just wanted to let you know that, you know, I represent a few people in Tamalo who are very appreciative of the, of the Commissioners for making, for restoring that seat. I know that there had been, I sensed a little bit of agitation from some of the Commissioners here last month when it seemed as though there was a demand from Tamalo to be represented. And I understand that. Just know that there are some people who feel very strongly, and that there's a few of us who, you know, feel very strongly about the issues facing Tamalo, but also the county at large. So it's good to have people that want to be involved. I understand that that won't happen until July, and that in the interim period, I was glad that you invited the public to attend and, and also to participate, maybe not only with those things, not on the agenda, but possibly agenda items as well. If it's practical, I know that sometimes it's not. If you have a large audience, it doesn't make sense to invite public comments. But, you know, in situations where, you know, it might be just a couple of us, maybe it makes sense that maybe we can add to the conversation and not be intrusive. So I look forward to that. With respect to tonight, I'm fully prepared with the, you know, I know it's public, but, you know, I'm fully read up on the ham radio issue. I know the history of it, and I do have just a couple of public, or a couple of comments and questions. I would like to be able to participate when it makes sense with a question, possibly, and comments, you know. I fully respect, you know, policy and protocol and the time that you need to be aware of. But when it makes sense, I'd like to, like to contribute. And that's basically it. And I will, you know, raise my hand when appropriate if I have something that's significant to be said. Okay?
So a note about sort of our process-
Right.
Since I understand it's been confusing, what we need to do is invite people to participate in the public hearing, as always. Usually, our staff does a really good job of sending out a lot of invitations or information about public hearings that are happening so that members of the public can come and give generally about a three-minute comment on those issues. So we'll be doing that tonight. Would be great if we had more people here, but we're certainly happy that you're here to comment on our public hearing. In terms of work sessions, usually those occur the meeting prior to the public hearing, as in the housekeeping amendments tonight. And so usually, we encourage people to offer their comments during the public hearing for that item, so that their comment can be captured for the public record. And so that's why some, on some items, we would like to get as much public testimony as possible, and others, we may ask that people hold their comment until the public hearing, so that we don't miss that critical pieces, those critical pieces of information, especially in terms of how they're related to our Board of County Commissioners. So I hope that sort of clarifies a little bit about why sometimes there's room for public comment, and sometimes there, there hasn't been any invited. And yeah, so I think that's just, I'll probably be reviewing this more periodically for people. I know I've said it before, but, you know, sometimes it's helpful to say it multiple times. Okay. Anyone else have any comments or things that they would like to say regarding this public comment?
It's nice to have someone who's attending the meetings, who's invested in their community, and willing to come up and let us know that what we're doing is important to you. So thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Okay.
Commissioner?
Yes?
I just wanted to note, we did have one attendee join the meeting.
Oh, thank you very much.
It's the original call for public comment.
Okay, um, does that attendee want to, if you would like to make a comment about an item not on the agenda, please raise your Zoom hand. And if not, that's also totally fine. We're glad that you're here, participating in any capacity. All right, cool. Then we will move on to action items. So our next item is going to be our public hearing, amateur ham radio facility amendments. So I will turn it over to Nicole Mardell, our Senior Planner.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, Nicole Mardell, Senior Planner with Deschutes County Community Development. So I do have a script to read, and because we do have a virtual attendee, it will be a little bit longer to include the Zoom procedures. So this is a public hearing on file number 247-22000912-T-A on proposed amendments to Deschutes County Code 18116290 relating to amateur or ham radio facilities. The Planning Commission will hear oral testimony, receive written testimony, and consider the testimony submitted at this hearing. This hearing is also being recorded. The Commission may make a decision on this matter today, continue the public hearing to a date certain, or leave the written record open for a specified period of time. The hearing will be conducted in the following order. Staff representing Deschutes County as the applicant will give, oop, please, one second, will give a brief staff report. We will then open the hearing to all present and ask people to present testimony, first in person and second by video or phone. Those in person can also provide the Commission with a copy of written testimony. Record materials can be found on the project website, which is shown here, and questions to and from the Commission's Chair may be entertained at any time at the Chair's discretion. Cross-examination of people testifying will not be allowed. However, if any person wishes to ask a question of another person during that person's testimony, please direct your question to the Chair after being recognized. The Chair is free to decide whether or not to ask such questions of the person testifying. Prior to the commencement of the hearing, any party may challenge the qualifications of any Commissioner for conflict of interest. This challenge must be documented with specific reasons supported by fact. Should any Commissioner be challenged, the member may disqualify himself or herself, withdraw from the hearing, or make a statement on the record of their capacity to hear and decide this issue. Following the hearing procedures, we will ask if any members of the Commission need to set forth any information that may be perceived as a conflict of interest. Moving into our hearing procedures, to comply with House Bill 2560, this is a hybrid meeting with both remote and in-person participation. For in-person participates, again, you'll be first to testify, so please raise your hand if you'd like to testify, state your first and last name, and mailing address for the record. For our Zoom participants, you will be first a attendee. So attendees are not on audio or video. Panelists have audio and video and the ability to mute and unmute their microphone. If you would like to, oh, I'm sorry, important tools to be aware of. So please keep in mind, if you're participating via Zoom, there is the mute button on the left-hand side of the bottom of your screen. There's also the stop video button next to the mute button. And of most importance is the raise hand feature, which will designate whether or not you'd like to provide testimony this evening. If you're participating remotely, to mute or unmute, you'll use star six on your phone keypad. And again, to raise your hand to show you'd like to testify, you'll enter star nine. At the time we call for testimony, you will raise your, raise your hand if you'd like to provide testimony using the button or by pressing star nine, and you'll then be promoted from attendee status to a panelist. You'll then provide your testimony and be returned to the attendee status, and your audio will then be muted. The next person will then be selected, and the process will repeat until those participating by Zoom have all testified. If the county's internet connection should be interrupted, we'll attempt to get back online as soon as possible. If this happens, please give us a couple of minutes to reactivate the public hearing before you attempt to log back in or call in. If your own connection gets interrupted, please attempt to join back using the same link you initially used. Getting back to our, I'll skip through this. Yeah, so getting back to our hearing procedure, following testimony, if requested by the Commission's staff, will then provide our closing comments. With that, I'll turn it over to the Chair for disclosures.
Does any Commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed. Okay. Let's see, so are you, do you say the next word?
Oh, thank you. Does any party wish to challenge any Commissioner based on conflicts of interest?
Okay. As no challenges are presented prior to opening the hearing, does anyone have any procedural objections to the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, the hearing is now open. Staff will proceed with a brief staff report.
Thank you. Commissioners, again, this evening before you is proposed text amendments to Chapter 18116290 of Deschutes County Code. This relates to our amateur radio facilities. And staff is proposing to separate the current amendments into essentially two tiers of regulations based on height. So we're splitting out regulations for facilities that are smaller scale, under 70 feet, and those that are a little bit larger scale, those between 70 to 200 feet. In addition to that, we're proposing just a general cleanup of the language to be a bit more clear. So some of the background on this item, you've heard this during the work session, but always helpful to have a refresher. Deschutes County began regulating amateur radio facilities in 2008 following a code enforcement case. So primarily, the purpose of the adoption of these amendments was to regulate some of the aesthetic impacts that come with these facilities. So during that time, the Board opted to include some setback requirements, limited unnecessary signage or lighting, required proof of an FCC license, Federal Communications Commission license for operators, and also required written compliance from Federal Aviation Administration, Federal Communications Commission, and Oregon Department of Aviation to show that they were complying with those applicable requirements from those agencies. At the time, the Board did not adopt a height limit for these facilities, except there was a provision existing in code that limited height in our airport-related districts and our landscape management zone to 30 feet as, as a standard maximum height. In all other zones, there wasn't a height, a height limit adopted at that time. So in 2000, in 2021, during the CDD's work plan development, the Board directed staff based on input from the ham radio community to revisit this section of code, to streamline it a bit. So in talking with ham radio community members, staff found that 70 feet is really the magic number that we should focus on for these regulations. So in hearing from ham radio community members, most facilities are typically 70 feet in height or less, based on the cost to build them, and also just the sizing of typically the pre-manufactured parts that you can get and some of the kits that are available. There's also another connection to this 70-feet height limit, which is in regard to an Oregon-revised statute, which limits the ability of local governments to regulate these facilities if they're under 70 feet, unless it's directly tied to an aesthetic concern. So in drafting the amendments, staff is proposing the following in terms of cleanup, so adding that cross-reference to the height limit in those aforementioned zones, the airport zones and landscape management zones, for clarity, just to make that connection a little bit more clear. And then we're adding the two tiers of regulations for, so for those that are under 70 feet, streamline the review process, allow it as an outright permitted accessory use, remove the requirement for the formal determination of written compliance from Federal Aviation Administration, Federal Communications Commission, and Oregon Department of Aviation. And this is primarily because quite a few of their regulations don't come into play if you're under 70 feet. So these agencies typically weren't able to provide any written determination because there wasn't really anything for them to review. We are maintaining the aesthetic requirements regarding color, lighting, signage setbacks, and we are maintaining the requirement for the operator's license. For those that are larger scale, so between 70 feet to 200 feet, we are requiring explicitly land use review, and we are requiring coordination with FAA, Oregon Department of Aviation, and the FCC. So again, noting that if requirements apply, they should provide that written determination. But for some that are, say, 71 feet, 72 feet, if they don't apply, we just require them to coordinate. Still maintains those aesthetic requirements, still maintains that operator license requirement. During the work session, I wanted to touch on a few questions that came up. So one was just asking how the regulations, the wording, might affect a renter in this scenario. So we use the term property owner in our draft code, and as you saw in my staff, staff report for today, the use of the word owner includes the ability for an authorized agent to submit an application. So we believe that, let's say that someone wanted to erect one of these facilities, they're a renter, the operator, operating license would be under their name. We believe that our language is flexible enough to account for that type of situation. We also had a question about how many transmission, or radio, amateur radio facilities we have in Deschutes County. And unfortunately, we weren't able to find an exact number. As you heard, we, we got some anecdotal information from our ham radio community that there's around 1,100 operators in Deschutes County. And in discussion with these groups, they noted that there's significantly less facilities, just because you do not need a facility to operate a ham radio. The equipment is pretty limited that you need, and the radius is pretty wide in the county as it is. Typically, you would erect a facility if you needed kind of a broader range where you wanted to go interstate or international. So we don't unfortunately have an exact number, but what we've understood is that it's significantly less than the actual number of operators. So with that, I also wanted to note, we have not received any public comments to date. And next steps, again, your options to move forward this evening are to continue the hearing to a date and time certain, close the hearing and leave the written record open to a date and time certain, close the hearing and set a date for deliberations, or close the hearing and commence your deliberations. And with that, I welcome any questions.
Commissioner Williams?
Just a general one for the facilities between 70 and 200 feet. What might that operator, is that someone that might be trying to go international? Or is it someone who's got a lot of, got a lot of ham? Because if we feel like, and I'm just, this is just more an educational question.
Yeah.
Are they down in a valley? So that's just a curious question that I had.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a great question, Commissioner. You know, I, I guess I could ask members of the ham radio community to provide some additional input, but my understanding from some of the research that I've done is the height just varies, again, on, on the range that you're trying to seek, and then some of your property conditions. So let's say that you have, you know, significant trees on your property, perhaps you'd need a taller transmission facility. But again, in talking with the ham radio community, part of why they were supportive of the amendment package and discussing it with them is they felt that 70 feet was adequate. That's the most common that you'd, you'd see in Deschutes
Chairman?
Commissioner Crawford?
Question for Nicole. So are you aware of any sites between 70 and 200 feet that are currently operating?
That's a good question, Commissioner. Unfortunately, I'm not. I, we took a look through the Federal Communications Commission data. They're, they're openly available data to look at any licensed facilities, their heights, their location. Unfortunately, we weren't able to find any. And additionally, we weren't able to find any building permits because typically a building permit would be required for something over, you know, 70 feet. That's a transmission facility. So I wasn't able to find any in our records. So they might be pre-existing, that 2008 ordinance, or we, we might not have any in the county.
Thank you.
So I'm unable to see Commissioner Altman on the screen at this time, so I'm not sure if she has any comments or questions. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so other comments or questions for staff? Um, so I think we're about to move to the public testimony.
Okay.
So we're good? Okay. So we'll now move to the public testimony?
Sorry, I didn't know how that works.
Yeah, yeah, so it's now, yeah, come on up. Share, share what you would like to share about this, this amendment.
I just, I'd like to say that I don't have any personal experience with this, but I do represent a couple of people who are in that, in that community, and-
Can you state your name for the, I mean, well- Can you state your name for the, well, he already did, so, or should he state it again?
Let's do it right. Jack Farley, and I reside in Tumalo. I'm aware of a network of community members that are trying to build a little bit of a support system. And I was told that it really is about emergency preparedness, and they feel very strongly about it. And that, and they're very appreciative of the county in initiating this proposal, because they are trying to help, which they're very appreciative of. And the one thing that I heard was that 70 feet is more than sufficient typically. One person in particular, she said that she's a little down in a little bit of a hole, and hers is 20 feet above her house, because it needs to be that high. But typically, it doesn't need to be 70 feet. But I understand that 70 feet is a benchmark. One question I had was from another gentleman who was asking about the 30 feet and where that come from, because he lives in an airport combining safety zone. And he said, oh, gosh, I have several trees on my property that are 50 feet tall. And he didn't quite understand how the 30 feet was arrived at. I think I heard you say, Nicole, that it had been prior. But he didn't understand that as far as airport safety. So he wanted to know that, just wanted to pose that question. But in general, I got a sense that people were very appreciative of the efforts being made to accommodate the community. And that's all.
Excellent. Thank you for passing that on. Okay, what about our Zoom participant? Is our Zoom participant here to make a comment on this amendment? Okay, so if we could go ahead and elevate the Zoom participant to a panelist? That will just take about a minute, I think. It's Nunzi, hi.
Gold, hello commissioners, Happy New Year. I have-
Can you also state your name and address for the record?
Nunzi Gould, 19845 JW Brown Road in Tumlo.
Thank you.
I have seen a number of ham radio antennas that you see before you see the beautiful mountains. So from our landscape management corridor, those are sitting above home site heights. And so a question I have is, is there no building permit that would be required to put something up that's 70 feet under this new outright-
Is this a question for staff? Staff question? Are you hoping staff will answer the question?
I'm hoping that you, as reviewers of this ordinance, have thought about if a building permit is needed, if it's allowed outright.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it. Please continue.
And then also, within the landscape management corridor, how are we actually protecting the landscape management corridor if something can go in that could possibly be 200 feet? So think a little back about the communication poles that became the golf nets that are by the Bend River Mall, which at the time were in the county, and how they got put up, and then suddenly people saw them in their views. And I'm just mindful about the aesthetics that we're approving within our community and how we're balancing that with public safety. Public safety being both a building permit, so it's safe and structural, right? And anchored appropriately on the ground. And also from protecting our scenic corridors, our landscape management, which also applies to our river corridors. So I think in the case of cell towers, there is a caveat that there be co-location of facilities on towers so that we don't just have everybody's individual towers in the cell industry. And I think we need to be thinking about where these might be located in the context of our scenic rivers, our federal wild and scenic rivers, our state scenic rivers, and the corridors that we're trying to preserve for our beautiful cascade views.
Okay, thank you very much. And is there, are there any other comments you'd like to make?
Nope, I'm just, if, is there a build permit needed if it's outright approved under 70 feet?
Could we, let's ask Nicole.
What are the guidelines that actually would protect the LM corridor from a monstrosity that could maybe be, you know, 70 feet is twice the height of somebody's house today. So even if it's located next to somebody's house, maybe not the silo on their old barn, if there are any of those that have remained, but, you know, 35 feet's the rural height in our community for building a home.
So I think I'm going to go ahead and direct your question to Nicole and see if she can provide some information.
Yeah.
Hey, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. So I wanted to note it's under your attachment one, proposed text amendments. So item number four, which is, this is under Section A, which require all facilities are required to meet these. These are general standards. So under item number four, it notes that the property owner shall attain a valid building permit, if required, from Deschutes County Community Development Building Safety Division. So that's the existing language today, and we kept that language as is, because again, we want applicants to check in with the building division. There are certain scenarios where, let's say it's 20 feet, where you might need a building permit. So we are still requiring that as a general provision. So a building permit would be required even if it's under 70 feet, for instance, in some instances, if determined by the building official. So that is still in our code. And then I wanted to touch on the landscape management zone. So again, the landscape management zone has that 30-foot height limit that's noted in Section 5, which refers you to a different section of our code. And again, if you're building in the landscape management zone, then you have our landscape management zone chapter come into play as well. And I believe there are some building review requirements in that section of code. So there's additional scrutiny in areas where you're placing one of these facilities in a landscape management corridor. And then I think there was one question from Jack, if I may answer. So he was asking about the 30-foot height limit in the airport safety combining zone. And I see Will's coming up to the table, so he might have a little bit more history on that exact number. The height limit essentially for the airport zones is intended to reduce conflicts. So it's limiting the height of structures. So you're essentially not being a problematic neighbor to an airport in a transitional surface where you might have a conflict with an airplane. But Will, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, just for context, certainly the FAA has an important role in preserving aircraft safety in the vicinity of airports. And there are, in many cases, pre-existing trees associated with that. So one of the things that they ask us to do is to regulate heights in those areas. And those are regulated both by building code, as you're seeing here, as well as by prohibitions on the penetration of imaginary surfaces. So if you imagine, as you go, as you get closer to an airport, airplanes get closer to the ground, and thus the sensitivity of structures in that area become increased. And as you're further away, the sensitivities are less. Airports generally have some authority to come in and in fact engage in vegetation maintenance that's hazardous for trees that penetrate their imaginary surfaces. So what you're seeing here is a combination of airport protections, a default, that meets our other building code requirements and an interface with those attempts to minimize aircraft interference. With regard to the landscape management, one of the questions that you received from the public, the building division does not, is not required to issue building permits for some types of tower structures. And according, and in the landscape management combining zone, the landscape management combining zone generally only applies to those structures requiring building permits. So there is a possibility of structures being constructed in the landscape management combining zone that don't require building permits. However, the overlay, in that overlay zone, I'll need to take a look at it. This comes up relatively rarely, but I'll need to look at the interface of those two provisions to see what the height effect of that would be. But the concern, there is, at least as I understand it, and I'll get back to you on this, is that there, you know, there is some concern you could, in visual corridor protection areas, see higher structures. The notion, again, it's important to remember that the purpose of the landscape management combining zone is not to protect view sheds of mountains or rivers or other scenic facilities. What it's trying to do is to minimize the view impacts that users of the corridor are experiencing. So the landscape management river protections presume that you're in the water, and it's trying to keep things looking relatively natural. And that the, if you're driving down Highway 97 or Highway 20, that the color screening protections are trying to keep it looking relatively natural. There's no intent or protections provided for scenic views. In addition, these towers, you know, tend to be monopoles relatively thin. You know, they don't tend to have the bulking or massing of a cell tower. They tend to be kind of a single guide post to get up to the radio height that they need. So the visual impacts of them tend to be less. And at the same time, they still can provide, you know, we had a code enforcement case in recent years where one of these towers, it was, you know, basically a line in the sky, was a line in the sky in someone's mountain view, and there were some concerns associated with that.
Was that a below 70-foot one or above 70-foot one?
Below 70-foot.
Okay, thanks. Are there other members of the public hoping to provide some testimony? I think we had just one Zoom participant. Okay. Okay. Let's see, in that case, I think we have to review our options. So our options are, we can, basically, I'll entertain a motion to either continue the hearing to a date and time certain, close the hearing, leaving the written record open, closing the hearing and plan for deliberations, or close the hearing and commence deliberations. So are there any motions as to where we should go with this at this time?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Crawford?
I move to close the hearing and set a date for deliberation as of January 26.
Okay, is there a second?
Sure, I'll second.
I think Commissioner Cyrus just barely had it. So it's now been moved and seconded that we close the hearing and set a date for deliberations of January 26.
Can I ask a question about the motion?
Yes.
So if we're closing the hearing, oral and written, then we're just saying, giving us time to sort of mull it over, chew on it a little bit, rather than deliberate now? Is that the intent of the motion?
That was the intent. And if the question's directed me, it's been kind of procedure for the last several years that we always give it a couple weeks to mull on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions on the motion or debate?
If we're closing it to public comment, but we still have a question after the fact, after we've chewed on it, can we go to the staff and ask that question and have the answer be shared with everyone?
My understanding is no, right?
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Peter Gatazki, Community Development Director. One can certainly ask a question of staff, reaching out to Nicole. You're just mindful of not introducing new information. But if you had a question, a clarifying matter pertaining to the amendments, to the findings, just as Commissioner Williams noted, that information, that question would be relayed back to the entire Planning Commission, likely in a staff, in a memorandum, just so everybody else was aware of the inquiry and could hear the response accordingly.
So we wouldn't be able to receive new information from you, like if we said, hey, can you produce this report for us so we can think about it? That would be a no. But if we just said, hey, I didn't really understand what you said, Nicole, about X, Y, and Z, and you could say, yes, what I've said about that was this, and here's what that means.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. To the extent that there was, what do the ham, how many are ham radio operators are out there, you know, that may have a facility over 70 feet? Nicole, could you get back and let us know if the hearing was closed? Then we couldn't provide that information. But just as you described, yeah, that's kind of the acceptable practice if the hearing is closed for oral and written testimony this evening.
Okay, Commissioner Hofcamp?
Maybe a nitpicky question, but then that would become part of the public record, that communication after the hearings closed.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, exactly. It would be noted in a, I think it would be important to note it in a memorandum. It was communicated back in an email, it could be packaged in a memorandum. You know, resetting for anybody who's tracking this issue, what was relayed during the hearing and a clarifying question, and here was the respective response.
But with public comment closed, no new questions?
No new, right, no new testimony. Correct.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, other comments, questions, ideas for? So this is, this would be not the time for additional public testimony, because at this time, we're deciding how we're going to proceed.
Question though, is a question appropriate?
No.
Based on the question I asked before, is the 30 feet a hard and fast limit set by the FAA? Or is that, is there room for discussion? Because my understanding is that 30 feet can be a place where people do need to have their height to get proper reception. I just didn't know if that was a hard and fast ceiling.
So at this time, we're not entertaining new questions or more to public testimony? And in general, we want to limit public testimony, which I should have said earlier, to one per person per public hearing. So I'm really sorry, unfortunately, we can't take the question. Will?
But we would be happy to follow up with staff. Definitely contact us, and we can discuss kind of the nuances of how the code, how the code works as part of-
Thank you. That's really helpful, actually.
Private communication.
You can still get the question answered and relay that information back to your person that you're helping represent today. So thank you, Will. That's a really helpful suggestion. Okay, can we proceed with our discussion about our motion and then go on to voting? Okay, so we can now vote on the motion. Commissioner Cyrus, how do you vote?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Hofcamp?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Altman?
Aye.
And I'll also vote yes, so the motion has passed unanimously to close the public hearing at the time setting deliberations for January 26. All right, so we can now proceed to our next item, which will be our 2023 Housekeeping Amendments Work Session. So I will turn that over to Kyle Collins, Associate Planner.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, Kyle Collins, Associate Planner. Give me a second, I'm going to share my screen here. All right, as the chair pointed out, tonight is a work session in preparation for a public hearing on the 2023 Housekeeping Text Amendments. The file number on this is 247-22-000-922-TA. Deschutes County is obviously the applicant in this case. I think most of the commissioners have gone through a round of housekeeping amendments before, but just to provide a general overview of what these are, they're relatively minor amendments to the Deschutes County Code or sections of the Comprehensive Plan to correct errors that are found in the code, primarily by staff, but often by members of the public as well. They reinstate omissions that were previously left out by accident, or they reflect updates to state and federal law that have to be incorporated in local rules. Some of the impacts, there are minor changes to some permitted uses or use standards in certain cases to align with state statutes. Generally, there are no state statutes, administrative rules, or land use goals that apply to these changes, because they are in fact minor. There are no interpretive issues, no new allowed uses outside of those that are called out explicitly within new state laws. So I'll briefly go through what the actual proposed amendments are. You can see on the screen here, these are all the affected chapters of the Deschutes County Code, as well as one chapter of the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan that are proposed for changes during these amendments. And I'll go through each of the kind of main categories step by step here. So the first is what I'll describe as a process error. It's called out within our final plating requirements in Deschutes County Code. This is a part of Title 17. There's currently a line that states that there has to be a signature line on all final plats for partitions or subdivisions that has to be signed by the county environmental health director. That's not actually the process that we follow essentially ever. It's always been signed by our Deschutes County Environmental Soils Division. So basically, anytime somebody tries to subdivide a piece of property, the very final step in that is the preparation of a final plat, and there are a number of signatures from various individuals, including the Deschutes County Environmental Soils Division. They have to review that, make sure it is in compliance, and then ultimately, they sign off and hand it back for final recording. So these updates just reflect that current practice that's been in place.
Just for further context, thank you for clarifying. But just to add some further context- But just to add some further context, we want to make sure that one can have a septic system. So before they plat the subdivision, that the soils are suitable for an onsite wastewater system. So it's, the last thing you'd want to do, as you can imagine, is record a subdivision plat. Then you're coordinating with the onsite wastewater division and you discover you don't have suitable soils. So their signature essentially acknowledges that they've had site authorization permits, and it's just a belt and suspenders approach to know that when a new lot's created, they will be able to have a septic system to serve that corresponding residential use.
And this is also, I'll just point out one final step here. This is in conjunction with site evaluations that are performed as a part of the actual partition and subdivision process. So before you even get the sign off from the Planning Department that, yes, you can divide a piece of land, you have to prove that you can have wastewater disposal sites on each lot that you're creating. And feel free to interrupt if you have any questions while I'm going through all these. The next set of amendments are what I'll call general amendment errors. This relates to Section eighteen sixteen of the Deschutes County Code. This is for the exclusive farm use zone. A previous set of amendments removed what are described as the solar setback standards for our yard section of the exclusive farm use zone. Solar setback standards were put in place essentially to provide protection of solar access to properties that are north of a particularly developed property. So if you're building a tall structure, you can imagine it's throwing shadow onto some northern portion of that lot. And this is to ensure that whoever that northern lot is maintains a certain amount of solar access. That's still been in place in practice within the exclusive farm use zone, even though this particular line of code was unintentionally removed. So this is placing it back in through that unintentional omission. Next set of amendments are what I'll call definitional errors. So back in 2019, a previous set of Housekeeping Amendments attempted to consolidate several terms that we had spread throughout the Deschutes County Code related to land disposal sites, disposal sites, landfill sites, recycling centers. Over time, a number of terms had been placed under our code. There wasn't a lot of congruence between those terms. We started using differing language depending on which section of the code. And some of these were updated over ten years, twenty years apart from one another. And so back in 2019, we specifically attempted to go through the code and align our standards with the Oregon Revised Statutes definition for land disposal sites, which is the formal state definition that's used for kind of the catch-all definition for all landfill-type services. Unfortunately, a number of sections of code that reference things that were basically land disposal sites were not captured in that previous round of amendments. So this is essentially to just clean up those 2019 amendments that didn't capture those. So moving forward under these amendments, all references to what were originally landfills or disposal sites will now just be a single definition of land disposal site. Just to provide an idea of what this goes over, these are all the different code sections that had differing language in there previously. Next set is some changes related to updates in state law. These are all the sections of code that are going to be affected under this particular set of amendments. And the state law in question is House Bill twenty-eight oh nine in corresponding ORS language. And it notes that a state agency or a local agency, in this case, Deschutes County, has to allow for the use of recreational vehicles when a natural disaster is cleared in an area. So if you have a home that's been destroyed as a part of, let's say, a wildfire in this instance, and the governor declares a natural disaster area within there, you are allowed to, during a period of time following the destruction of that home, live in a recreational vehicle on your property until such time that a certain period of time elapses. I think it's a two-year window is what's actually called out in the ORS. Or you're moving forward with rebuilding what the original home was. So once it's rebuilt, then you have to move out of the recreational vehicle. Or if there's some evidence that you have said you're going to rebuild this, but you haven't made any forward progress on, on rebuilding. Second piece of language related to this, it removes some inconsistent language that we had dealing with recreational vehicles that are used for residential dwellings more generally. Specifically, it calls out the National Flood Insurance Program language related to our floodplain code and how that affects recreational vehicles that might be sited in floodplain zones. Essentially just finds compliance and alignment with those flood insurance rate program standards for any recreational vehicle that might be placed in a floodplain zone. Next is another update to state law. This is related to House Bill twenty-eight eighty-four and corresponding ORS. And it notes that when a unit of land is trying to become lawful or a legal lot of record, I think maybe some of the Commissioners are familiar with this, but there is a number of issues that came up several years ago, about five years ago, related to previous historical accounts of how properties were created. Prior to nineteen seventy-seven, there really was no formal way to establish a property or no specific formal process that was required to create a parcel. So under current rules, you would have to go through a subdivision process, for example, or a partition process. If you rewind the clock prior to nineteen seventy-seven, no rules were in place at all. You could write up a deed to hand off two acres of land to somebody else, and that was a legal way of establishing a property. However, during that period of time when rules ultimately were adopted, some people were still moving forward under the, the old kind of way of doing things by just subdividing property via deed. And unfortunately, those properties were established unlawfully in that particular case. It's created a number of legal and development issues for property owners. If a parcel can't be found to be described as what we call a legal lot of record, then no type of development permits can be issued for that property until that's been rectified. State law allows for a person to remedy that situation in certain cases by recording what's called a one-lot partition. A one-lot partition is exactly the same process that you would go through for a two-lot partition, but it more or less just clarifies that, yes, this parcel was, let's say it was established by a deed transfer in nineteen eighty-one, you're just legalizing that transfer to fully validate that it is, in fact, a legal parcel that can be developed. The previous set of rules, you had to do that within thirty days that a property was found to be unlawfully created, which was a huge time crunch for a lot of property owners because you have to hire a surveyor, you have to go through a relatively rigorous subdivision process, essentially, even just for this one-lot partition. And so this extends that timeline out to a full year after a property has been found to have initially been created unlawfully. And again, that's all captured as a part of that original House Bill in the corresponding ORS language.
Commissioner Hofcamp?
So Mr. Collins said, so that it extends the timeline, gives it more time, but that essentially illegally-created lot still has to step through the process that you just alluded to?
Correct.
So this isn't like grandfathering in automatically those lots?
It's, it's basically to remove the time crunch that property owners were ultimately found in. So I'll, I'll give you a hypothetical.
Yeah.
Let's say a property owner came in to develop a property. There was no indication of how it was created. It hasn't gone through a previous subdivision or a partition. And so they would apply for what's called a lot of record verification with our department. And through that process, maybe we discover that it was originally established as a unique piece of land just via a deed transfer, and that occurred in nineteen eighty-two. Because in nineteen eighty-two, there were specific rules and a process that they had to go through, that property was, in effect, created illegally. However, in most cases, these properties are already developed. We've issued development permits to the property, there's a house on it. They've gone through multiple redevelopment processes, so it's not a bare piece of land. But because we found that the property wasn't created lawfully from that point forward, we're not allowed to issue any type of development permits moving forward unless they go through this validation process. So the moment that we find that, yep, not a, not a legal lot of record, that starts this, in this case, three hundred and sixty-five day clock for you to go through the one-lot validation process.
Okay, and I should probably know this, but that, the process you alluded to, that year-long process involves public notice, public participation?
It's a land use application.
Okay, yeah.
So it functions in the same way. Both, both a lot of record verification is a land use application and the one-lot partition is.
Okay, thanks.
I know that's a, a very confusing set of rules, but-
Think of it as a one-lot partition. So they're coming in for a partition application to demonstrate, you know, I think at the time, that they could meet the partition standards for the underlying zone. But nonetheless, they, they come in, it's a partition application, just as Kyle noted, it's a, people would receive notice of application, they would get a tentative plat approval. And then, as Kyle noted, they, they have more time to get, you know, execute the survey for ultimate signature and recording. So it's, as most, most of the property owners that find themselves in this situation are able to remedy it. So it's, it is a formality, a land use application that leads mostly to a formality, but the peace of mind to know that the property is now lawfully created, obviously, when they want to sell it, it's, it's, it's a wise decision.
Will?
Commissioners, and just a little additional context is that this provision, if you think about what it did, and this is something in statute that we're required to implement that we have no discretion over. It basically was a safe harbor provision that said, counties, if you've been issuing permits to a property for, you know, decades, don't pull the rug out from O into them and note that, you know, that their property was not properly created in nineteen eighty-one due to some deed confusion. And it provided a pathway to recognize these properties that have been receiving county permits over long periods of time. The specific difficulty was coming in is that when you receive notice from the county that your property was not lawfully created, however, was eligible for this validation process to legalize it, that the state statute said you had ninety days to perfect it. And in practice, hiring a surveyor and getting that survey recorded in ninety days was a real difficulty. So as a practical matter, what we were doing, we're telling people, hey, we're going to hold this decision for you so you can get your surveyor hired and get your survey started so that when we put it out here, the ninety-day clock doesn't run out on you. Now, this matter, this issue came up with enough regularity throughout the state that it was taken to legislature, and the legislature changed the statutory requirement to give you a year to engage, you know, you've received the approval to do it, you just need to engage in recording. Now, instead of ninety days, you've got a year to do that. And because this is a matter of statute, it's something that we have to implement, and we're just tidying up our local code so that somebody who is looking at our code for instructions on how to operate this wouldn't think that they had ninety days because they have three hundred and sixty-five under statute.
So have, has the county been mailing out notices to people that their lot was not properly reported?
So the way that this would come up is if you can-
I mean, I'm sure like a lot of, you know, there's some old houses around here from the fifties that have, are still in the same family hands.
Yeah, and so, you know, the question of law of record, so this, we could go on a great length about this. I'll try to focus in on your question as narrowly as I can, but let me know if you want to know more associated with it. So when you come in to develop a property in the county, the first question we ask is, was it lawfully created? So if I have forty acres and last Thursday I gave my brother a deed for the back twenty, and he shows up and says, hey, my brother's got a house on the front twenty, and I'm here to put my house on the back twenty, the county is supposed to say, hey, whoa, you were supposed to engage in a partition, you need to divide the land, this is a single piece of land, you don't have a separate development, right? Halt. And so in those cases, it's pretty straightforward, that happens relatively rarely. What happens more frequently is that there have been rules regarding the development of property and the division of land specifically, going back into the seventies roughly in the county. And so we run into circumstances where somebody, particularly in the realm of nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen eighty-two, where they weren't aware that they needed to come to the county and apply for a partition. Because prior to those dates, you could just give your brother the back twenty by deed, and now it's a piece of property. So when people come in for a development proposal, they're in a, one of a couple situations. One is that the county clearly knows how the property was created, it was a subdivision, there's a partition. Two is that we've already been down this path before and that we've made a decision about how the property was created. Three is that the property was created by deed typically in the sixties, and so we write a short decision that says, hey, your property, we didn't know how it was created, but we looked at the deeds, it was created in nineteen sixty-two, it's good for now and evermore, enjoy. So this tends to be a one-and-done thing, but in rare circumstances, something went wrong in the deed history, or more specifically, a predi, either you or your predecessor in ownership of the property did something illegal to divide the property. There's a number of pathways to reconcile that. A statute provides a pathway to, that says basically, if you should have gotten a partition, go back and do it the way you should have, under the rules that would have applied back when you did this. So you get a kind of a do-over opportunity. Another option is that if the county has been reliably issuing you permits against that unit of land, and this is that validation option, that you can say, look, the, everybody thought of this thing as a legal unit of land, the county's been issuing permits, let's memorialize this as a, as a piece. It's relatively rare for a piece of land to be irreconcilably illegal. That comes up, I can't think, almost, almost never. In the end, in the end, most of these things have one of these safe harbor pathways out, barring that, you know, somebody just divided it last Thursday with, you know, by deed.
And if I may, Commissioner Williams, you can imagine as, as the county's technology and knowledge and systems have advanced, someone who, today, for, this would be highly unlikely, but if someone today transferred a, sold a tax lot by deed, and then they, they, some might think, oh, I've got this amazing property in Deschutes County, I need to come in for a building permit, it, it would get flagged. We would, we would look at, you know, we'd look at the assessor records and we would, we basically say, whilst you, you own a tax lot, that's not a lawful establishment of a unit of land. So that window that Will was talking about was that evolution between a period when Deschutes County didn't have land division, partition, or subdivision ordinances in effect, or they were, just got into effect in that, those few years following, you know, communication was imperfect, the technology was imperfect. But what's, what's worth underscoring, and we are talking a lot about this topic, but it's, it's important to recap for those that might be listening, there's, more often than not, there's a way to remedy it.
Questions, everyone? Shall we continue then?
Yep.
The last set of amendments that I want to talk about is an amendment to our Goal Five inventory that's captured in the Comprehensive Plan. This is for our cultural and historic resources. It's been brought to staff's attention that one of those resources, which is described as the Lynch and Roberts store advertisement, is currently listed under the wrong tax lot in our comp plan. And so this is just in an attempt to remedy that situation and clarify the actual tax lot that this resource is located on. And with that, next steps, as I pointed out earlier, this is a work session in prep for a public hearing. That public hearing is slated to take place at the Planning Commission's next meeting on January twenty-sixth. I'll open it up to any questions.
Okay, we just had a nice round of questions. Are there other questions maybe that are occurring to you all as you're mulling this over?
One quick one.
One good.
Commissioner Hofcamp?
Yeah, you, you mentioned, Mr. Collins, that these come before, text amendments come before the County Commission periodically, irregularly. I don't know, how often can we expect to see these in a work session? By the way, thanks for the work session, I realize we don't have authority here, but it's nice to be included in the loop. But how often might we see these? Hard to say?
I would say generally, once a year, maybe slightly longer.
Okay, cool, thanks, that's all I got.
Okay.
The la, the last set of text amendments, Housekeeping Amendments, excuse me, was adopted in January of twenty twenty-one, I believe. So it's been, been kind of a while since the last slate of them, but that's because we've had lots of other, other projects going on.
Do you just kind of accumulate them somewhere in a file and it's just kind of, okay, yeah, yeah, I get it.
You would, you would be amazed at our, at Will's team that does development review. They, they will find these, these Scrivener's errors or just some inconsistencies, and we have been more, much more responsive to, just like you said, Commissioner, a dedicated directory with a narrative that describes the, the circumstance, and then it's just available to kind of tee up in the queue. And we try to, of course, Housekeeping Amendments are, reflect the amendments that, that, or the issues that Kyle just talked about. Anything that, you know, has some, may have some volatility to it, that's not something we would, we would want to put forward with a Housekeeping Amendment. So it's, it's really just, as the title suggests, it's just keeping our code clear and consistent and making, keeping track of that on a regular basis is important to us.
Makes perfect sense. I imagine the person of tax lot fifteen oh one was surprised to find out that they, the Lynch and Roberts store advertisement historically- the Lynch and Roberts store advertisement historical society, rather than fifteen oh-five, so I understand that, that makes sense.
Okay, great, so we'll proceed, unless there's any other questions. Okay, um, so we'll proceed to Planning Commission geographic representation debriefing from Peter Gatawski, Planning Director.
Yeah, thank you, I, uh, appreciate the opportunity, and Mr. Farley, uh, alerted the, the Planning Commission in his opening remarks during the public comment period. Um, I sent the Planning Commission the memorandum last week, just to let you know of the, of the conversation that actually occurred yesterday. Uh, you're, you're well aware that, that Tamalo area, members of the community have respectfully been engaging staff, the chair at times, um, and the board about the importance of having a representative from the Tamalo area. And, uh, and so that issue has been duly noted. The last time we had a conversation, that staff had a conversation with, with the board was on December twenty-first, and I forwarded that packet to you as well. Uh, at the time, there was, there was a real discussion about, should the Planning Commission consider ex officio members? There was great interest in getting a representative, uh, from Tamalo, uh, engaged in the Planning Commission. Um, and, and Commissioner, I should say Chair Kiras offered some remarks as a, as just, uh, representing herself, uh, with, with the board. Um, but anyway, at the end of that conversation, the board didn't act on ex officio members or expediting, um, a recruitment or amending Deschutes County code. What they said is, please come back, um, in the new year and provide more context on the geographic representation of the Planning Commission. And we have a section of our code, two point five two zero four zero, that speaks to geographic representation. And to the extent possible, geographic representation is emphasized on the makeup or the composition of the Planning Commission, but it's not a requirement, and many members of the community believe vehemently that it's a requirement to have somebody from Tamalo on the Planning Commission, and in coordination with legal counsel, and, um, myself and, and Dave Doyle have articulated that, that just because the Planning Commission doesn't have geographic representation as described in the code, that doesn't undermine the composition. So yesterday, the Planning Commission, um, I, I re- I reiterated kind of how, where we were, how we got to the point, uh, where we are today. And I provided them with basically three concepts for their consideration. Concept one essentially keeps the, it's, it's, it keeps the code as it is, it doesn't require a code amendment. It would, um, take advantage of two forthcoming vacancies that will occur on June thirtieth of this year. One is an at-large vacancy that, that opens up, and another one is a bend area vacancy. And what, um, so that was option one, which would be, you would take the at-large vacancy and you would roll that into the Tamalo area representative, uh, for recruitment. The bend area rep- uh, vacancy can be moved to a current at-large member who happens to live in the bend area. That person would absorb that bend area vacancy, freeing up an at-large position that would also uh, be utilized and as in a recruitment. There's some real advantages to that, I acknowledged it in coordination with legal counsel, it doesn't, like I said, it doesn't require a change to, to the code, it provides, um, uh, some, some, uh, flexibility for the board. And, uh, and as I'll come back to, they ended up choosing concept one, and they emphasized for the at-large position that it be a, a, a member of the community that doesn't live in any of our municipalities. So that was option one. Option two would have taken those two vacancies, um, one for the Tamalo area, taking the bend area vacancy, uh, reapplying that to the current at-large position, freeing that up and making that available for a Terrebonne recruitment. On December twenty-first, there was conversations among the board, uh, should we, should we dedicate a geographic representation, uh, a representative to the Terrebonne area? So that was option two. That would requ- would have required a code amendment, because we, currently we don't, it doesn't speak to a Terrebonne, uh, description. And as you, if you looked at the packet, I had maps showing kind of the status quo and how areas could change. There were also, um, some, uh, data that could be seen in the maps that showed, uh, basically where, uh, houses, the density of houses are in those respective geographic areas, and that was noted in the memo, more or less to give an idea of kind of where the population is. Um, that was the most readily available information. The, concept three, which also would have required amendment, would have created a nine-member Planning Commission, one for a Tamalo area, one for a Terrebonne area, and two more at-large positions. And under state law, Planning Commissions can be five-member, they can be seven-member, or they can be nine-members, uh, Planning Commissions. Most counties that rely on that nine-member Planning Commissions undertake quasi-judicial, uh, proceedings, and they, they utilize a nine-member Planning Commission to guarantee that they're going to always have a quorum. As, as you, as we, you all know, and for anybody who's watching, um, this Planning Commission focuses on legislative and land use policy matters. So, um, after that conversation, after that overview from staff, the board eventually, as I mentioned, decided to go with concept one. Um, and so what is going to happen? On February first, uh, there will be a recruitment announced for both the Tamalo area and the, at, for a Tamalo area and at-large representative. That will be available starting on July first of this year. Um, I will, uh, that, that, so that'll be open for one month, all, at, you know, prior, prior practices, uh, the, I will work with the board to select, um, uh, how, engage the board in terms of how they want to go through the interview process. In the pa- the last, last year, each commissioner wanted to participate in interviews. In years previously, just the chair has participated. So depending on what the board wants to do, we'll determine, um, not only my role, but potentially the chair and the vice chair. But last year, the chair and the vice chair and myself were paired with a commissioner so that there wasn't a de facto public meeting. So we'll know about more in March, possibly April at the latest, how the board wants to execute the interview process.
Both of those are four-year appointments?
Correct, the, there will be, uh, there'll be four-year appointments, and the, the bend area position that's vacating, that's going to the current at-large position, that would set a four-year period. So you're basically, when everything's said and done, um, in, before the new fiscal year in July, the board will basically, uh, verify, basically three appointments. The, the Tamalo area, the at-large area, and the new bend area, and those all be kind of crystallized with four-year terms that would extend out to twenty twenty-seven. So I'll pause there, that's a lot to unpack, but good conversations from the board. Um, the board did talk about, not eminently, the importance of, uh, one commissioner anyway, was really interested in looking at the geographic descriptions. Um, when I looked at the Tamalo area description, it looked reasonably proportionate to what I think the community thinks of Tamalo. Um, one commissioner thought, well, it could go a little bit further south, um, in the northern edge of the bend area. Um, thought it might be able to go a little bit northwest. Um, so to the extent that the, uh, to the extent that the board wants to revisit those descriptions, that'll, that conversation will happen, uh, a year or two from now. Um, but, uh, from a staff standpoint, when I had our GS analysts bring out those maps, really show the township and ranges, I mean, they, they created this code in nineteen ninety-four, not a lot of spatial analysis. It seemed, it, it, they, it seemed re- it seemed reasonable to me. Um, but nonetheless, I think it's, it's wise, to the extent that the board wants to do it, to look at the geographic configuration because the community is changing. And I think it was, ultimately, I think it was a healthy conversation, and I want to, I want to note, um, really the genuine input and engagement from Tamalo area representatives, given the issues that are um, being discussed in that community of, of their desire to have representation, and, and the board took note of that. And there will be a dedicated recruitment, I will notify everyone that's, that's reached out to the board uh, or to staff to alert them, uh, when that recruitment goes live so that they, uh, they're aware of it and they can apply or tell their friends or neighbors so that we can have, uh, a robust candidate list that the board can, can select for interviews and then ultimately make an appointment, so.
Quick, quick question, so did you, did I hear you right, you said the recruitment would go live on February first?
Yeah, so that's my goal.
February, March, April, May, Ju- like, five months ahead of, is that unusual?
Yeah, I mean, I, we did the, we did the, it is, it is common so for, well, um, when you think, so it's a one-month recruitment, and then I've got to, I've got to engage the board to figure out how they want to do the interview process. Um, and then you have to schedule it, and so I could see interviews happening late March into April. And then all of a sudden, you're in, you know, you've got to come back and have them discuss who they want to appoint. So all of a sudden, you're late April, May, and to have, in the past, we've had, you know, uh, forthcoming appointees sit in the audience and listen, so when you, when you factor in two recruitment processes and just the challenge of coordinating with the board as you get closer into the budget, uh, it, it, it seems reasonable to me.
Thank you, that clarifies that for me. Um, other questions, comments for Peter?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair?
Okay, um, so we will now proceed to our next item, which will be Planning Commission and Staff Comments. Uh, let's start with Staff. Uh, Peter, your comments are complete, okay. So we'll go to Mr. Grove next.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I just wanted to update you that we did in fact, or I did in fact have a meeting with the board yesterday, uh, January eleventh, to talk to them about the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three work plan update. Uh, before them was a question about how to prioritize a variety of tasks that were on our work plan. And of particular interest was the question of the wildlife inventory update. Uh, we had, under Board Direction, paused the update of the mule deer inventory process due to a, uh, unexpected need to put psilocybin, time, place, and manner regulations into place. Uh, with those resources freed up, we returned to the board and asked them how they'd like to prioritize staff in terms of, uh, work efforts. And, uh, the result of that meeting was that the board agreed that the wildlife updates should proceed. And so we've got a green light to proceed for those. Uh, in addition, they took interest in particular for something that had been on the plan for a while, which was an update to the code relating to in-conduit hydroelectric power. So these are those, uh, facilities where, uh, turbines are placed for electrical generation in irrigation facilities. Uh, there'd been a problem in past years because the code that had been put into place with regard to those facilities had assumed that they would happen on, uh, natural water bodies, so in the Deschutes, uh, Little Deschutes, you know, uh, Weiches. And, um, you know, and included a number of appropriate habitat protections for facilities located on our natural water bodies. Uh, what we're seeing increasingly is these in-conduit hydro facilities that are located away from natural resources such as riparian areas or sensitive habitats, and that are located just out in piped sections of irrigation canal. And so the board has asked, uh, the staff to investigate, um, making presumably simplified rules for those, uh, facilities that are not located in the river and thus needing those types of protections. Um, so we'll be beginning that process, talking to stakeholders, uh, checking in with the board, and ultimately, assuming it proceeds, coming back to you with a set of new regulations, um, presumably to facilitate this type of opportunity. Uh, generally, when you, editorializing here a little bit, but when you think about these things, um, you know, the, there's typically no natural resources associated with these at, at the location where they're at. And, but there may be neighbor issues, you know, these things do make noise, uh, there are power lines associated with them. So it'll be interesting for the board to decide how it wants to weigh those out. The Deschutes Basin Board of Control, the, uh, Coalition of Irrigation Districts has a real interest in these. This is a potential money generation, and I think from, you know, all things being equal, this is free power from gravity that's being lost right now that could be captured, so an exciting opportunity to revisit that.
I, Will, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
I promised, but before we move on from that, um, a, a little bit of a curious distinction and, and, um, about, uh, the off-site nature of those pipes as the resource is taken from a very important resource that's very definitely onsite, whether, well, it's, it's a river basically, or a stream, so it's surface water. Um, so I, that, that strikes me as a little bit curious. Um, but just thinking about that process, and I, I realize it's way early on, but do you anticipate, does it have to go through a full, like, compliance with goals and so forth analysis, or not?
It would depend specifically on the regulations and the locations where it need, where, uh, it was proposed. So, uh, one of the things at the outset is that we would be working together with the board to scope the proposal. So if you were looking to locate these facilities in places that they're not currently allowed under the code, there may be some goal, uh, there may be some Goal Five resource inventory, uh, questions. In some areas, these are already allowed, and the question is as to what rules they're subject. So it would depend a little bit on the, the, the situation, uh, and how the board, and how the parties who are stakeholders to that process, uh, would like to see this move forward. Uh, so the level of analysis would be based in some, to some important extent, on the, the broadness of the regulation.
Okay, fair enough, and not to argue, you know, but just to, um, highlight that, um, I used to think of those, the possibility of those as, as you characterized it, free energy that's out there, the water's flowing, you know, why not tap into that flow as an energy source? But, um, I'm beginning to understand there are some nuances there, such as, uh, false incentives to maximize flow in order for energy generation, which then impacts the resource that the water's drawn from. But a discussion for another day.
Yeah, certainly, that's a, it's, it's interesting that you bring that up, that tends to be the second thing that comes up in association with that. And the Deschutes Basin Board of Control, when recommending that the board proceed with that, noted that they are precluded from, uh, changing their operational patterns to accommodate these facilities. There certainly could be an incentive to run water that you wouldn't have otherwise run through a pipe because it generates electricity. Um, they had represented that they're precluded from that, but I'm sure that that's something we'll be talking about.
Good, thank you.
Uh, with regard to the other nine programs, I'm returning, not next week, but the following week to the board for the, those other zoning amendments that are on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three work plan, to see what the relative priority is for the board on those, and so you may see some of those smaller ones, things like ham radio, or any new housekeeping amendments that come forward, uh, be prioritized by the board and brought forward to you as a smaller, smaller items. Those are available to, in the memo that I sent to you as zoning text amendments in Table Three. And each of them has an appendix that it describes in some length what, uh, that is involved with, if you want to dig in there a little bit.
Questions for Will? Okay, um, Kyle and Nicole, do either of you have any staff comments? Okay, so we will go ahead and proceed with Planning Commission comments, uh, Commissioner Cyrus, do you have any?
I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Williams?
Good.
Commissioner Altman? Vice Chair Hoofcamp.
Two quick comments. Uh, thank you all, colleagues, for the confidence, uh, in me, um, and thank you, Commissioner Altman, for the nomination. Um, I look forward to fulfilling the awesome roles of Vice Chair up here, but I, I really appreciate that, thank you. Um, and then just a comment on, um, on, uh, staff, uh, reports and support of our meetings. Really, really impressive and helpful. Um, I hope that you all have an opportunity outside of the meetings to decompress and scratch your heads and wonder, where the hell did that Hoofcamp question come from? Um, but, um, in our meetings anyway, I really appreciate, uh, the full, um, uh, answers that are given to sometimes off-the-wall, kind of out-of-context questions that I ask anyway, um, and the professionalism that the staff exhibits, and I continue to learn from that, so thank you very much, that's all I have.
Commissioner Crawford?
Yeah, I've toyed with this for a few moments. Um, I don't want this to come across as being negative because I understand staff issues, et cetera. But it, to me, it'd be nicer to be able to get our meeting minutes a little bit more timely, rather than getting a whole group, so I don't know. And it's certainly not a reflection on Brooke or anybody else, but just, it would be, I think, better suited, more productive if those got to us in a more timely fashion, so I'll just throw that out.
I don't think that's negative, I think that's a constructive idea. Uh, it's a little hard sometimes to remember what It's a little hard sometimes to remember what, 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 said or who, even who was there if it's too far back. So thank you for raising that.
Other than that, nice meeting.
I'll also say thank you to you all for your patience over the past year and willingness to continue having me be the chair. I feel like I'm learning a lot and happy to be here, so thanks again. And if there are no other comments, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 6:56.